Higher than the table.
You think so?
Yeah.
'Cause that tank... I don't know, it's a good question. No, 'cause that tank when you're over by...
The old...
It was nice.
The old...
The tank's not that much higher up, right?
It was perfect elevation.
I had last week off.
Oh, okay.
So, I did some more...
I don't...
Mine is... Oh, I do need roll call from you guys, so...
Yep.
Okay. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, November 27th. Call to order at six... I'm sorry, 5:32 PM. I will move and go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter 30A, section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding the town administrator. And immediately following, go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter 30A, section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do, ask me 1725 Waste Water Water Unit. And then immediately following, go into executive session pursuant to Mass General law chapter 30A, section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do, NEPBA Local 121 Police Unit. We will return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote. Brian, what do you call the roll?
Selectman Loon?
Aye.
Selectman Bassrush?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Thank you all, we'll see you shortly.
Welcome back to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, November 27. We will resume regular session at 7:02 PM. Thank you for your patience. We will move into our joint meeting with the Planning Board regarding the Planning Board vacancy appointment. Come on up? Yes, thank you. I'm formally called for joint meeting to order at 7:02. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I'm just running a little behind. So, we have an individual interested in vacancy?
Yes, Joseph Newton of River Road.
Any concerns or?
No, we would welcome the opportunity to have a full committee and look forward to working with Joe. He's not sure. He might be switching jobs that might take him out of the area, but he's also looking at an option for remote, which means he can still serve, so.
Any concerns or questions on the board?
I have no concerns.
You didn't have any concerns today?
No.
I didn't want to speak for you guys.
Okay. No concerns?
You have it, you want me to?
If you would.
Sure. I make a motion to appoint Joseph Newton as a member of the Planning Board through June 30, 2024.
Hold on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's a roll call. Thank you. Will you call the roll, Brian?
Selectman Moynihan.
Aye.
Selectman Bastarash.
Aye.
Chairman Smith.
Aye.
Planning Board Chair Boyd.
Aye.
Planning Board Member Smith.
Aye.
Planning Board Member, excuse me, Brannan.
Aye.
And that's everybody.
Pass me honestly. All right. We'll let him know. Someone will let him know.
Yes, that was a nice question. We'll reach out tomorrow and let him know and get him sworn in as soon as possible.
Excellent.
Our next meeting is January 16.
Okay.
It'll be a special permit hearing, so jump right in.
All right. Motion to adjourn the joint meeting with Planning Board at 7:04.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll continue. I didn't adjourn ours either.
Thank you.
We'll move into the joint meeting with the Senior Housing Committee at 7:04 PM.
You don't get to move very far.
We didn't even really have to get up. Come on up.
Honorable Chair. I can move over one if you want.
This is review of the RFP proposal and recommendations for senior housing.
At this time, I would like to recuse myself. Bill, are you going to go over all 260 pages with us tonight?
I am, no.
Haven't you read them, word by word?
Every word.
Did you?
Not a chance. I did go through quite a bit of it. There's a lot.
There's a lot.
I should have taken it. We only got it a couple days ago, so it was.
So you, so the board has the proposal?
Entire proposal. Full proposal.
Before we get started, Jim, if you would, just so it's clear.
Yes, at this time, I would like to recuse myself from this conversation due to a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. So, just wanted to get that out there clearly. Thank you, Jim. So, yes, we do have the full proposal. Not that anybody but Scott read every single word, but.
I wish I could actually say.
My only concern was if we didn't have it, we were going to turn over our booklets, our proposal booklets to you to make sure you had full information.
We have full digital copies, and I know Moynihan has at least one bound copy, if not more, that is in the office for us if we want to go and flip through it in person. So, but if we need more, we'll let you know, of course.
So.
I'll give you the floor, sir.
I just put together a little bit of, to give you a history of what we've done so far and what our recommendation is so far through this process. So, we started this process about eight years ago?
Mm-hmm. Maybe nine.
Maybe nine. I may be wrong, but that's close.
I want to say 16, 15, 15, 16.
Yeah, yeah. This is when we started this process, so it's been a long time. So, the request for proposal went out in October, October, no, it was before October, but was due in October, I believe it was October 25th, and we got that back. And shortly thereafter, we had a meeting to look at the proposal. At that first meeting was Gina Golvini, I believe, the Executive Director of Rural Development, RDI. They were the only developer that came forward. We've had somewhat of a long history with rural development, because when we first started, they were the only agency slash developer who attended any of our meetings. And even back then, they were interested in the project, but were busy doing other things and were already committed to other things, and continued to stay involved and to let us know that they were still interested in the project and when it materialized and it was convenient for them. So that did happen, and again, they came forward. The Senior Housing Committee completed the comparative evaluation criteria and found RDI to be, and I'm speaking for everyone, to be, the majority of what they submitted to be highly advantageous. And at our second meeting, the committee voted to select RDI as a developer with conditions. And I believe you might already have that. If you don't, we can get that draft, that letter to you. It was a unanimous decision. We all signed it, except for those who were not in attendance at the time. And I believe there would have been, yes, that's correct. So, based with the, based on the conversation we had with the Executive Director of RDI, there were a number of questions that the committee had, and I'll go over what I can recall, and if anyone on the board wants to jump in and add if they forgot something. One of the issues of concern was site design, building design, closeness to senior center, survey of property being needed because of their design based on developer's layout. Road layout was a concern. Reasons for eight multiple generational family units slash affordable housing. Reason for 18 units, age restricted, affordable housing, age being 62-plus. Need slash cost for a pump station. Local contribution of town of Irving, $488,188 slash grants, i.e. or grants. Total budget of $15,683,812, lease of property. I said, and I wrote, see page 43, income target and proposal rentals.
We want to clarify on some of the questions. So, the site that they, what they proposed was to be basically right next to the senior center itself and right next to the library. So, the design, which I think you had an opportunity to look at, is there would be 18 one-bedroom, 62 and above in one building, and then on the other side would be the eight multi-generational townhouses. I believe there would have been four of them, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. And the bottom floor of the multi-generational would be handicap accessible, so that, and again, the 62 and older would meet that. So, basically, designed for multi-generational families where they might be all blended families, they might be living, or they might be raising their grandchildren or whatever. But part of the issue that we had with the site design was it was too close. We had envisioned it being a little further back, and they wanted to waive the road. They actually wanted to be in the road layout. Now, when we talked with Gina, it was, they were, it was because of a cost factor. They were trying to keep the cost down for the development. However, at our last meeting, Gina was there, I'm really bad with, Alyssa LaRose, and I think the designer, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, Jen Hale.
Okay, yeah. I didn't see you down there, Leslie. Leslie would have all the news.
She does have to do with design, though. Little bit.
So Jen Hale works with the agency, but she also has experience in all the topography and the design piece, so that's really where she's been a real asset.
So, as we explained to them, the reason that we were looking to have the proposal pushed back was that the senior center and the library are used quite frequently outside of operating hours for various other departments, committees, events, and things like that, and that we actually use the lawn for overspill parking on occasion. Also, we were aware that this would be housing for people who were going to live there 365 days of the year, 24 hours a day, and we wanted a little separation for their privacy as well as separation for the public buildings. So, at our last meeting that we had with them, they said they were going to look at that and see what they could do, work the numbers, because really it was all about the numbers.
Numbers.
And that they understood that the town didn't want to abandon Care Drive, because we need, we explained that we would need to put in a pump station and that sort of thing. So, one of the things that we did talk about at the meeting, and this is not part of our thing, but was perhaps relooking at the layout of the road. It's just a paper road. And relooking at the layout to perhaps move it a little bit so that they could work their, you know, their proposal, and we could still have our road. So, those were the things that we talked about. So, that was really, and we had, we were disappointed, I think I can speak for the committee, we were disappointed it was only 18 units. So, that was one of our questions, why 18? And why was it only a single story? And they explained that it was a cost factor, really it was just economics. Elevators are expensive, not only to put in, but to maintain. That's why they.
We did originally want two floors.
Right.
And we felt that that was really important. But the one thing I have to say is they have been extremely flexible with us. They did a tremendous amount of work. They want this, I think, as much as we do. So, they're pretty adjustable.
Right.
And what they have is Sanderson Place underneath their belt now in Sunderland, and they're finding the, you know, what they should have done and what they didn't do. And the one thing that was important that we asked for is, okay, Glenn, don't get mad, washer dryers in the rooms. And the reason that we wanted that is because. And the reason that we wanted that is because they found in Sanderson Place, it was difficult for some of the seniors to lug their stuff all the way down there. When they got there, it was already full with someone else's that didn't pick up. And so they felt that it was important enough, and they listened to us, and they put that in. So that was a really big plus. There was some other really big pluses that they listened to, that I thought was really excellent.
Yeah, so they answered all our concerns that we had in the letter that, I'm not sure you've been at, see or not, that we had their concerns.
Yeah, we could see it.
Really, the, for us, the issue really is the placement of.
The buildings.
The buildings being too close to what are public buildings. And so that, they said they were going to re-look at that and come up with a different way. Also, um, there was an issue because they had, when originally we went out, it was only on this side. We had carved out that, I don't know, I want to say six point four acres of land. And they were only putting one set of housing on there. And then they had gone over to the senior center land, which we hadn't carved out. But that was a question that was asked during the request for proposal process that we did answer. It was part of the questions and it was posted properly. So, moving forward, if we should go forward, we'll need to carve out some of what they need. One of the questions that we did ask is how much land do you actually need to make these projects work? Because the senior center project is eight acres, I think eight point two or something like that. And the other one is six point four. So, we still felt that it would be in the town's best interest to save some land for future development. So one of the questions we asked them, and they did answer, is how much acreage is your project going to take up? Which they carved out for us, that was a supplemental they sent us. That was a, um, that I'm sure that Mariah passed on. It was very clear that, what they were thinking. So, as it relates to the survey, the lands would be, need to be broken out. And then if this moves forward, then the land lease would have to be, you know, would be for those two things. And then, then that also led to the discussion, maybe we can move the road a little over so that we can make it work.
And that was contingent upon the lawyer.
Oh, yes.
I don't know if that's been.
A review with counsel.
Right, right. So that has not been finalized yet?
No.
Okay.
That was what I was going to clarify.
Yes.
So the piece about the discussion during the, you know, question period and the et cetera, that came up. Is that sufficient from a procurement standpoint? Is still the open, from a legal standpoint, is it fully checked or not?
Right.
Correct.
Yes, that is the question.
May require some expedited redo if that's the passable take, which we did have to do in the recent years on the mother project.
And when we did sign, when we did sign that, that was part of the contingency that we did sign.
The vote.
Yeah.
I think we're all caught up to you.
The other thing, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, one other thing that would be advantageous as we grow is that it could happen that there could be a road that would actually go down to Route Two. You know, through the back. And you could see that on the land. So there's, there's a lot of possibilities that, for it to grow in addition to that.
Paula's got big plans.
Oh, yeah. Always has. I have to do all the.
Took us eight years to get to here.
She's talking thirty years now.
It's not that bad.
I'll be in the cemetery.
Oh, God. Okay, they're on camera, by the way, so.
I do have a question, and I know you would ask them about placement in relation to the two existing buildings.
Giving more space.
And also placement related to our current layout of the roadway. You had also asked about, you know, you wanted more units, it's not cost effective. But who knows what things look like in the future? And I know we, you know, part of this is a, what, ninety-nine-year land lease?
Yes.
That's our, that's the proposal. So we're talking long-term, but is there a way to, when you're asking them to finite, or tell us how much land they actually need for this proposal and shift things around to make that happen? Is there a portion of land that ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, that we determine the need is so great that we want to put a third building?
Yes, so they were very amenable to, I don't have the map in front of me, but I want to say for the senior housing.
It's two nineteen.
Yeah, for the senior housing, they, um, they were only going to use.
I think it was two point.
Yeah, two point, and that's, that's an eight.
Two point seven, something like that?
Right, so that would retain the seven point five acres of land for the senior center and anything behind it on this, on this side of Care Drive.
Yeah.
And then on the other side, they were only going to use.
Two point one, I think.
Two point one, which would leave the, like, the five point. So there would be enough for future expansion.
Usable land, though.
Yeah, it is usable, there's.
A little more work to do with it.
It would be, yes, it's not that it's not usable.
Just not cost effective right now.
Not cost effective. And one of the reasons also, looking at this map, that they, they said, the reason, they, they, on this side, we have some wetlands issues. And they, the blue line on that is where the hundred-foot buffer is. That's why.
Staying within that.
Yeah, staying within that. That's where the building would be.
So close to our current layout.
Right.
Okay.
But the other side doesn't have as many, doesn't have as much of that.
So in theory, this left side behind the proposed workforce, uh, housing could be a third building.
Yes.
Yes.
In the future.
Which is why we also wanted to make sure that the road.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is based on the numbers that they put in the proposal. It said that the need, and I'm not sure I agree with the numbers they put in, that we only had two sixty-two-plus applicants?
Um.
And, oh, waitlist.
Currently on the waitlist, but that doesn't, I mean, this is like a.
The numbers are much, yeah.
Five-year.
Plan. A lot is going to change, even the fifteen million dollars. Who knows if they're going to lock all that in? But that's, that's their thought right now.
So everything, we are an aging population in Irving particularly. We have, you know, our school population is declining, our, what somebody called, oh, the silver tsunami. That term is, is on its way. And, um, and so it'll change a lot in the five years. And also, some people.
Does have it.
So what we have here is we have people that would love to downsize, but don't want to, don't want to move out of Irving. So they stay in their house that might have three or four or five bedrooms, even though they're just one or two people. But they want to stay in Irving. So, who knows the potential for people that want to live in senior housing in Irving until it actually becomes a reality?
Okay.
And there's a lot of data in here that states it. They've got a lot of information.
Yep.
That, there's so much to read. Takes a weekend.
And then some.
I know.
I know you're busier than that on weekends.
So, to, to add to that, um, RDI did, I think, did an excellent job putting together the proposal. They backed up from the beginning to the end, their reasoning. And, um, and, you know, did it very well. Some, our concerns are, were, our major concerns were, again, the location of the, um, the senior housing. And the big concern was, was the eight units as well. And it wasn't what we asked for. And it takes us in a different, um, different venue. But, um, it's, I understand the reasoning for it. And, um, to this point, working with RDI in, in the beginning, and to this point now, I, I don't believe there's anything that's in the proposal that we can't work out. And they're more than happy and willing to work with us as we are to work with them. So, um, so I, I believe we're going to be putting it in your ballpark to, to make a decision to, um, to continue to move it forward. And for us to continue to work on this as a joint venture of, um, Town Administrator, Select Board, and Town Planner.
Right.
As well as our community.
There was, just, just to give you an idea, when we did do the request for proposal, there was one other company that came here. But it's, I think, when he saw the, what we wanted and needed, he was thinking much bigger. And this wouldn't have fit his, I mean, at all. He was more from, from the eastern part of the state, and I think he thought.
Forty, fifty, sixty.
No, sixty and, or seventy-plus.
Units, yeah.
Yeah.
Which we don't have with the.
I believe his comment to you was even that small.
Even that small for him.
Hundred-plus units.
But it was interesting that he did think that Irving was a, an opportunity.
Yeah. While I'm disappointed that it's only eighteen, it's eighteen more than zero that we currently have. So. It's my step in the right direction. That's why I asked about ability to expand in the future.
The ability is there. I think, we, we've been doing this a long time. It feels like we are finally.
Somewhere.
At the right place, at the right time.
Yeah.
To make this a reality moving forward if everything falls into place. Which is very, I mean, it's, it's exciting for us.
It is. And they're, they're actually saying that if we moved on schedule as planned, it would be five years. Which is a big deal for everything.
That's quick to put.
It's very quick. So, I mean, they actually, right, they actually put a schedule together.
Yeah, I saw that.
They, they did all that. So, I mean, there'll be things that if there's not certain funding or so, and so forth, that it could change it a little bit. But we're hoping that, we want everybody to know, because the first thing that's going to happen is can we put our name in? So I just want everybody to be aware that it's going to be a five-year process. But it's exciting.
So, one of our, one of our other concerns is, besides four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, which may change, as we look at the pump station and even the road layout. We, we may have to kick in more than that, but I don't know, we don't know what that looks like. And even if that's going to happen, I mean, it could stay exactly where it is. But, but that's a major concern and something that the community needs to be aware of, as well as all the other pieces of this. We, um, we, we are missing two people on the ZBA, which we need that position, those two people urgently in order to move forward. If we go by that timetable, it's someplace in the spring.
Yeah.
We'll need them.
It, so the reason, it's a, the, the way the law reads, even though in Irving, most of our special permits are through the planning board. In this case, the comprehensive permit that needs to be done, because this would be, which is known as a friendly forty-B, has to be the zoning board of appeals. Currently, we only have one member. They really need three to operate and then to have an alternate as well. So that is a concern, that we don't have an operating ZBA. But, um, and the other, and the, the four-eight-eight was our contribution, but it doesn't necessarily have to be, like, in cash. It can be in, in other ways, like extending the sewer line or the, you know, some of the funding that we've already attributed. That could be counted against, could be counted towards that four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Mariah and I met with Representative Whipps this morning. And, of course, when they came here for the discussion, they were very interested in our senior housing. And we had a nice, long meeting with her. And we have her support, that she may be able to find us some state money.
Get some additional funding.
To move towards, for Irving to move towards the project if it moves forward. She was going to help us reach out to McGovern. And also, he was able to get a million dollars for Athol for their senior housing, senior affordable housing, so. But we're doing everything. And RDI is also looking at ways to get it funded.
There's a lot of funding opportunities right now from the federal government and so forth. That wasn't there before because of seniors. And they're finding that it's so necessary to try to find housing for them.
Right, and, and there is the big push, the big housing bill, which hasn't passed yet, but they've been talking about it at the state level, is the more affordable housing, more senior housing. And maybe in a rural area where you just don't have it. So, like I said, maybe we're in the right place at the right time this time around.
The timing couldn't be better for us to be in this process or at the beginning of this process. It really is really prime.
Yep. So maybe eight years ago was it prime?
Right.
But it is an amazing opportunity for the town.
Mm-hmm.
It's awesome.
Did you have any further questions?
Probably many, I don't know if they'll all be tonight.
We don't expect them all today. Expect many meetings, but, yeah.
I know, obviously, the units and all of that and the elevator being a huge cost. Was there any opportunity to have more units, even if they weren't multi-story? Or is it really economically right now, eighteen is the cheap spot?
The way that they explained it, it was a, it was a topographical, and the building is long. So it's single-story. They're designing a single-story with one-bedrooms on either side and a long corridor in the middle with light coming in. It's a very nice design so that the seniors could conjugate in the middle regardless of the weather. And they felt that if they made it any longer than that, then they would be running, there is some area back there that does drop off. And so they would have to do some earth moving, would add to the cost and that sort of thing. That's where the eighteen came from. They really thought, that was a number that they could be sustainable. They looked at the thirty-unit model, and they looked at the eighteen, they looked at in-between. And really, to make it work feasibly economically, it had to be the eighteen.
If we could come up with two million dollars, I'm sure that they would do it. But the two million dollars is really, they have to, in, they have to have two elevators.
Right.
And in Sunderland, they only have one. So.
But they changed the law.
But the law has changed.
They changed the law since. So they would have to have two. And I think that was probably the biggest factor, because I would have loved to have more. And I think we could have sold it.
Do you have the endowment next year for a lot?
I'm thinking that, you know, maybe we can get donations or something, I don't know. But, I mean, we would have loved to have seen that. We really would have. But at this point, I think that this is a excellent choice. And who knows what could happen after that.
And also, the, the eight units of the workforce multi-generational housing is also an economic decision. They need that component to make the whole project work.
Right. And there are seniors in town that I can even think of that actually have, like, a daughter or a son or something living with them, that they need more than one bedroom. And this only offers one bedroom per unit. And they found that, even the, it's six hundred square feet per unit, which is pretty substantial for a lot of that we looked at. We looked at a lot of four hundred square foot units. And we didn't think that was that bad. And then when we saw this, we were really happy about it. And, and all, you know, all the bathrooms and so forth there for, you know, shower, all, everything's wide enough. Anything related to seniors, if there was a wheelchair, there's, there's a lot that they had thought about. And they did everything. We wanted a portico, which we felt was really important. So if the van, which we're talking about, the FRTA van, um, either using our van or the, the van from Green, or the, you know, the FRTA bus service. A lot of people have groceries, they don't want to be dropped off in, in the rain. So that, they did that for us. They did a lot of things that we asked for.
I also believe, if I remember our last meeting with the Executive Director, that she indicated on the eight units that they would be age restricted as well as the.
Correct.
Well, they would be, right, well, it's multi-generational.
It's multi-generational, but would be, the age requirement would still be.
That's what I thought it was.
I thought she said that.
I did too.
We could see clarification, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
I'm not sure that's.
Because they call it workforce slash.
Right, but what she did reference was similar to what Paula just referenced in terms of there could be sixty-two-plus folks living in that multi-generational, especially on the first floor where it's completely handicap accessible, just like the one-bedrooms.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think there's an age restriction, because on the three-bedrooms, it could be families.
Right, well, because it's workforce.
Right.
Development housing.
Right. But the downstairs, there could be, you know, like Paula mentioned, it could be families. It could be a husband and wife that for whatever reason, you two.
Don't want to be in a one-bedroom, so.
But, yeah, and I think the five-year timetable is pretty accurate, but I would hate for anyone to say, oh, it's five years. Why aren't they built? Because I know what happened at Sunderland and things happen.
Yes.
That you don't expect to happen. So that definitely took longer down there than they anticipated, but, and, you know.
But we have hopes.
This is a lot of steps further than we were eight years ago.
Yes.
Or however many. Probably as long as I've been on the board and then some maybe. The, did you? I have a couple, but go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The only other one, I think, off the top of my head was just, so the close to half million local funding, which could be equivalent, could be different things, probably even some of the equivalents end up being, coming from some cash somewhere. You know, sewer lines and stuff, I mean, we're still going to be outlaying some.
Or grants.
Right, right.
Or grants or state funding. So it would be like, it was earmarked for us.
Right, that we can pass through to them. Yeah. The question I had is when, was it clear at some stage in the timeline that they offered? I didn't notice it, where we would need to have that committed and to continue. Like, is there a point along the way?
I don't know if they gave a timeline.
See anything?
I didn't see anything and they didn't mention, I mean, I got the impression it was more of a collaborative effort. As long as we were working towards that, that was fine. It wasn't like if you have it, you know, by two state, you know, it doesn't know.
Sometimes they are, but.
Right. But more working towards that, that end. And then that's, because they also would need some, some of their grant funding may require us to buy in the town to have a share.
Like a match.
And so, you know, that's, I think, where they were going. If they said, yes, there's a commitment and that would score higher in the grant or they would get the grant because of that, so.
But at least they, at least they came up with a figure amount and not just at the very end, say, gee, we need another half a million dollars. But they gave it to us upfront. Because they did a lot of research on all these grants and everything that they are able to get. And it's affordable housing.
To answer your question, I didn't see one in there, but to me, it makes sense where you're looking at complete seventy-five percent construction drawings and obtaining updated cost estimates would be a good point where they're, you know, and that's January one, twenty-twenty-five. So, that's where my, my mind says, you know, if they're at that point, they have new numbers and that four-eight-eight will be solidified of, you know, what it really is. So we have between now and then to maybe start finding ways to putting some way or applying for grants or, you know, working with reps on, you know, state funding and all of that.
Right.
Over the next, you know, year.
As part of your planning.
Yeah, just thinking about, what does that look like? Five years will go fast if it's really only five.
Yeah.
Still like forever, but it will go fast.
I'm sure that they'll also, if this moves forward, that they'll update us when they expect or when they will need some sort of commitment from the town.
And the, and the other thing that we asked them, that we are very concerned about, that we just didn't talk about, is the maintenance of the building. Because everybody knows I am, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, everything was, was taken care of and well taken care of. So they did even gave, give us a maintenance schedule.
Yes.
Which I thought was great.
I just wanted to add that at the French King Bridge Convention dedication a few weeks back, I spoke to Senator Comfort and she indicated as well that please let her know and keep her in the pipeline as to what we needed.
Yes.
And that she would be working with Suzanne.
Suzanne Whipps.
Representative Whipps.
As well. So the two are both, both on board with this project all the way, so.
Couple of elevators.
That would be good.
But no, I mean, we'll take.
But I think that, I think that because this is their area, it'd be really feasible that they might really be able to help us out more than we even realize.
They seem committed at the few times that we've talked to them about it.
Exactly.
To helping us, so.
So I was just looking at the timeline and it has us looking to select a developer on December one. It's not going to happen.
Well, we know some of those.
But asking about, you know, next steps, so we're waiting on full council review.
Yep.
Yes.
And it's part of that review, if I remember hearing that correctly, is any changes to the layout, road layout. But then also the ask of movement of the buildings in proximity to this current building.
Further back.
And that is currently falling within our current layout. So the combination of all of those.
It's a parcel that wasn't in the original.
Right, in the parcel, so.
We would look at proposing a subdivision. So we'd have to have a surveyor come out, help propose to you a subdivision.
The what legal's reviewing is whether or not we can move forward with the proposal because it includes a parcel that wasn't originally part of the scope.
Correct.
It was addressed in the midst.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, so.
It's addressed in the addenda.
In the addenda, yeah.
Before it comes back to us again, that all of those questions are answered, that we can make an informed decision before we start awarding.
Yeah, well, to me, was first look at it here, the recommendation, didn't know if we'd have that yet. We don't from council. And then to me, if we have it by next meeting, put it on with capital and finance, talk big picture.
And do a full review, yeah.
There's, you know, no surprise, there's going to be some local funding. It's a big project.
Yeah.
It's going to impact us even if there wasn't funding. So, you know, looking at that and including everyone in that discussion about what does that look like and where do we go? And before we make a final kind of.
And you can see in the timeline, we're already behind and that's going to happen continuously.
They'll readjust the timeline.
Yeah.
Moving forward once the things go up.
Yeah.
I was curious, is there a deadline to award the request for proposal? Or do we have time that we can work on it? Is there, you know, some days?
The committee's made its recommendation. You've put it in front of the board. So I think we need to answer these questions. So at this point, there's no other, there's no other vendor in the bidding process right now. So I think if both parties are mutually agreeable to an extension, if one was necessary, to make a decision, I'm sure we could arrange for that.
Okay.
There is a timeline.
There is a timeline then?
Right.
We, I believe we can put it in sixty days.
Sixty days.
But again, I believe we can mutually agree if we need more than sixty days for that.
I just wanted to make sure we were.
That it wasn't going to nullify anything that was going to.
Right, I was worried that.
Yeah, that would be not good.
If there was three or four competitive bids that we were reviewing, that would be different. But there's one.
We're happy we have the work.
They clearly want to work with us and be successful, so I have no doubt that they do want to.
They do want to work.
Okay.
Other questions for tonight? No?
No. Wait for council review and just peruse all the documents.
Read some more of those words.
Yeah. If more questions come up, send them to either Mariah or myself. We'll compile all the questions and start working on the answers to get it back out to the both committees.
And we'll keep you posted. Once we get that back, obviously, you'll hear as well. And then when we put it back on the agenda to discuss again and continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you all for your work on that.
That's good.
This is exciting.
Yes, it is.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make the motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the Senior Housing Committee and continue the select board meeting at seven forty-four P.M. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to rejoin the conversation.
Thank you. Jump to number three, review of the FY twenty-four Maple Avenue landfill professional engineering services proposal. Pete, come on up. Section three. So we looked at this last meeting or so and had questions about the detail of the significant increase. And we're looking for that breakdown. And. Received some further information from Diane Bond.
So, yeah, I was just going to say.
Some of them, so let you just start.
I reviewed the additional document. There was a secondary one sent and it had the, what was supposed to look like a further breakdown of the cost analysis of how they got there. I'm not going to lie, I was a little disappointed because it's the same numbers in a spreadsheet form rather than a Word document. They may have parsed out what their third-party costs are, so what they're purchasing and what they're paying for services outside. But there's no breakdown of their own internal cost of how they got there. You know, I spoke with the superintendent about it a little bit. I was, you know, I'm not concerned with the level of service we'll receive. I was just looking for some clarity. And it's also nothing that, you know, there's pieces of this that when he and I were talking, you know, one of their suggestions was, well, I mean, this isn't, one of these isn't that difficult. You could build your own. You know, the initial, no, we're not, you know, we're not building our own mechanisms that we're, you know, DEP wants somebody who does this for, you know, a thousand times over to be doing this and putting it in the ground. And so my, my ask for clarity wasn't to make the decision whether or not we're going to do the work. It's to know that we did our due diligence and that, you know, the cost makes sense and that it's, you know, justifiable. It's not to say that I'm not going to recommend that we move forward with tie-in bond and do the work. I am going to say that I'm a little disappointed that they just regurgitated the same information and just put it in a different format and said, here's the breakdown you were looking for. I knew from the last one, in their actual proposal of task one, two, and three, that there was expenses and there was tie-in bond cost. And they've done nothing to break down the tie-in bond cost. That's their internal mechanism. And they just didn't break it down. They just gave you the same cost again, so. I'm not sure where that puts us. I do want to see the work done. You know, it's, you know, the PFAS testing is slated to start this spring. We're coming into winter now, so it's not like we have a ton of time to, you know, start this process over and start doing it all again. Just didn't sit well with me when I was reading that. So that was my, my thoughts on it. Turn it back over to you.
I mean, we need to do it, obviously. So I guess it's, are there more details or do we want to push for more information or we? We're totally accepting of what we got. I mean, I don't know the right terminology, but.
Do we have the luxury of waiting one more meeting to make a decision and ask them for the clarification that Mr. Bastarash is asking for?
I have to look back at the timeline and the proposal. The original proposal. And there's reference to fall twenty-three, so. But we also know that this is often getting completed in June, right, of the following year, so. I think in prior ones, that's what I've seen.
The fund report getting filed?
Yeah, so, you know, I, there is some language on the fourth page of the proposal about the post-closure should be done in the fall for sampling and stuff, so.
We usually have started by now.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not at a point where I want to.
Should we?
I would like to have a conversation or, you know, I know, maybe I'll put that on you to have that conversation that in the future, when they're putting these forward, if it, the expectation is not just a lump sum, take it or leave it type proposal. It's how are you getting there? For many years, we didn't ask for that detail. That does not set the precedent that that's what we're going to get going forward. My ask is that when they're putting those proposals forward, it's, you know, our anticipation is this many number of man-hours at this rate and this is how we got to this dollar amount. It's very easy to just throw out a thousand dollar here and a five thousand dollar there and say, that's the cost, take it or leave it. I'd like to know how they got there. But I also don't want to delay this to a point where it becomes problematic that we don't do the stuff we need to in a timely manner. Because if they do bring down the justification, if they have the table in here, I'm sure, I'll go out on a limb and say that they used a formula and said, you know, we're anticipating this many hours, this many, you know, at this rate. And we'll find where they got it. But I just don't want to have to guess on how many hours at what rate that they were doing. I wanted them to be able to tell us that. So I would just suggest reach out to Jeff again and just let them know that in the future, expect that our expectation, my expectation, is that there's a little greater detail on the tie-in bond portion of the cost analysis, not the expenses for third-party and materials. I don't know what others feel about that. But I'm also in favor of moving forward because I don't want to delay this to a point where it pushes us out of ability to maintain compliance.
Right. No, I agree. There's a few places where they reference that there's costs in there, but they don't break them out, so.
Right, that's the, I mean, so they give you, they give you the FY twenty-four expenses, which are all their third-party. That's all your lab testing, third-party lab testing, that's all of that stuff, that's materials. And then they give you a total. Well, the difference, the delta, is their, their cost, their internal, you know.
Well, there's reporting and there's other things, but they don't break out any of that. To your point, it doesn't list like we expect to spend ten hours or.
We've gotten proposals for different things that say it's going to be, you know, this is an eighteen-hour job. It's, you know, this is the rate we charge at and this is our expectation and, you know, not to exceed.
A lot of our other engineering will see that.
Yeah.
Foresight visits assumed to be.
Correct.
Quarterly at four hours a visit, whatever, right? I mean, there's some estimate behind that and it tells you something more about what the substance behind it is. One of you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we engage tie-in bond for the FY twenty-four post-closure landfill monitoring, engineering service for task one, two, and three, for the total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Brian, are you executing?
Yep.
And authorize Town Administrator Brian Smith to execute all required documents.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jump into where?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
I'm going to jump down to the last item. Potential ratification of the memorandum of understanding with the NEPBA Local one-twenty-one. And just advise that we have ratified the NEPBA Local one-twenty-one contract. New contract that expires or contract amendment that expires on June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. That will move into the police items.
Yes.
Chief? Figured I'd get that one out of the way before you came up. So we have first up, I believe, in order here of our agenda is review of Police Department Policy four dot twenty-eight, Police Vehicles First Read.
Thank you for having me, gentlemen. So I missed the safety meeting that we recently had, but in talking with the Town Administrator, it was brought to my attention about having a backup camera. it was brought to my attention about having a backup camera policy. And instead of me trying to recreate a whole policy for just backing up, I just found in the police vehicle, in our daily operations of our police vehicles, I could just add a quick little section in there that addresses what Maya is looking for. And so that, and I took Scott's advice and I did the, the red line with Brian's help, so.
Thank you. It's very easy to scroll through and see the one paragraph you put in, the new Section C under Number 9.
Yeah.
I did laugh a little bit that, is Maya requesting that they do away with the normal practice of looking behind your vehicle when you're actually backing up over the shoulder? Are they, are they recommending that if you have a backup camera, that that is what you, they prefer?
We need to offer guidance in our policies for the proper use of the equipment that's provided. So if you're providing that equipment, whether it's mirrors, whether it's backup cameras, whatever it is, we have to provide our guidance as to what the preference is, and then the staff should be trained to that. So it's not necessarily to replace anything unless that's our preference. Part of this is coming from, let's say it was five years ago, we applied for the first grant to put backup cameras in all of our equipment that mainly took care of all of the Highway Department vehicles. As we've replaced cruisers and other vehicles, we've added that equipment as its part of the order.
Yeah.
And then, most recently, we received one more safety grant from Maya, this is to take care of fire apparatus. So, at the conclusion of this project, all of our vehicles will have this equipment in it. The question after that was, have we ensured that our policies are in place to reflect that change? And that was the place where we are deficient, so we are trying to correct that.
I think, go ahead.
A question regarding that, do you know, and this may or may not come into play, but based on academy training, training for emergency vehicle operations, I recall we were strictly prohibited from using any type of backup cameras we had too.
Yeah, they have, they haven't implemented that in the program, and I, I wasn't at the meeting. I think what, what Maya is just saying is that your cruisers have these, we should have something in writing that says that we've instructed you to use it and to know how to use it.
How to use it, yeah.
Not that it, not that it takes place of.
Yeah, when I first read it, I was like, I hate saying it takes the place, and, and after I read it more and hearing your clarification that it's, it's not, you have it, it's a tool, here's how you use the tool in conjunction with your normal practices and other processes and procedures.
Well, and that's, I think, maybe the piece that, as I'm hearing this and reading it, is missing is, you'll do these things, and the standard practice is. In addition, you have these tools, like, use these tools in this way, right? Just that, that sense of, if, if that is inadequate to, like, it says mirrors, but you also, depending on the obstructions, can look out your back window over your shoulder first and see, you know, assess, and, and obviously, the walk-around's in there too, so, I don't know if it needs more language or not, but I think that's, these are auxiliary tools to what should be.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't make too much out of it.
Okay, I don't want to either.
If this satisfies Maya, that's really what I care about. Does it satisfy Maya, and we all understand what normal practice and procedures are of how to back a vehicle up?
That's exact, I think in talking with Brian.
Don't need to make a mountain out of it.
When I gave, it was basically a couple sentences, and, and I think me and Brian, even Brian, said, we're not gonna make this difficult, so.
No.
It's just the piece.
And they don't want it to be difficult.
Sure.
Fair enough, if they're, if they're happy with it.
Fire's already has a policy in place, we're addressing police, and we'll be coming forward with a policy for highway and for wastewater. Again, they will all be very simple in their, in their guidance.
Understood. Any concerns with it otherwise?
Uh, the only other thing that I would recommend, since we're reopening the whole policy, and this is just language, but in Section 3 under Definitions, I would recommend for 3B and 3D, when we're talking about patrol vehicles or unmarked vehicles, that we replace sedan or truck with a four-wheel motor vehicle, because most current police vehicles are no longer sedans, we've gone to SUVs and, so, just, some people will always correct me, are not trucks, technically.
Right, I'm just saying, we should maybe move to more general language, again, to simplify it.
So I didn't bring, Select Menloin, I didn't bring the whole policy, I just brought the page that I just highlighted. So I got Section 3, under the Definitions, 3B, 3D, changing sedan and truck and replacing it with what, all-wheel drive? Typically, we have like the all-wheel drives or.
Just a motor vehicle.
Or a motor vehicle.
Right, so, 3B says a marked or unmarked four-wheel sedan or truck, I would just say a four-wheel motor vehicle.
Four-wheeled motor vehicle, okay.
Whether it's all-wheel drive, independent.
Okay.
Any of those things, it's just.
Very good. I can take care of that. So it'll be ready for the second read.
Okay. Good?
That's it.
Okay, carry for second read next meeting?
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
View Patrol Officer Position Recommendation?
Yes, so, very excited, and Brian put together pretty much what I was gonna talk to you guys about there in, in the packet. But the, the Hiring Committee has met, gone through some applicants, one, obviously, is one of the Select Board members, and they made a recommendation to me, and based on my interview and the background check that was conducted by Sergeant Pecos and I, he passed the background flying colors, no problems. He is post-certified. We would, when he left Greenfield, he had met his requirements for fiscal year '23, he has not met his requirements for fiscal year '24 training, but most of us haven't yet. That's, that's an ongoing process that needs to be completed by June 30th. So if we get him in and get him, get him working, he'll be, he'll be able to log into a Catus and get that completed by June 30th with no problems. And he's aware that he needs to do that as well. Another thing that I noticed, just going through his packet, was is that he has an extensive background in firearms, and that's an area that we do lack in our department, is having somebody with knowledge of, of an armor. Not saying he's by any means a certified instructor to be a.
I was just gonna ask that.
He's not, but he has, he has the knowledge and the background. I think we could easily, if he, if he looks like he's gonna be sticking around for a few years, maybe send him to, to some sort of a school to, so we have an in-house trainer for our firearms and, and, you know, can look at all of our weapons when there's a broken one, you know, can address issues. So I'm very excited about that potential as well.
So if the other board members would entertain my comments, in the interview process, this candidate did strike me as somebody who is very much focused on the type of community policing model that we as a community are looking for, and his personal life experience that he shared with us gives him what I think is a very dynamic insight into the job and interacting with people. He presented very well during the interview process.
Yeah, and I, I was not part of that process, but the Town Administrator did give me an overall view of how all the candidates did, and he said the same thing, the Town Administrator said, very community-oriented. I think he's gonna be a great fit, if you guys decide to take my recommendation and the committee's recommendation.
Well, I think I just heard your recommendation, so. I said, I think I just heard what your recommendation is, obviously from the committee too, and.
Yeah, I have no concerns with it. I read the letter that had the synopsis from the chief, I heard the chief, heard the recommendation, read the packet of information with the application, resume, I have no concerns, no reason to question the recommendation.
Same.
Thank you.
You want the full motion?
Please.
Make a motion to appoint Brandon Garvey as a full-time benefited patrol officer in accordance with MGL Chapter 41, Section 133, for a term of one year, pending successful completion of a pre-employment quarry driving history check, health exam, and drug screen, psychological examination, and certification by the Massachusetts Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission at the rate of Grade P2 Step 1, in accordance with the NEPVA Local 121 Collective Bargaining Agreement, and with a start date on or before January 2nd, 2024.
That was second to? That covered everything?
I think you got it all.
I think you got it.
There's always a lot, yeah, really.
Perfectly, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, I will let him know, and we'll start the, start the process. I'll call AEIOU probably tomorrow and get that process going.
Nice.
And with Dr. Lawrence Kelly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
Then the third piece?
Yes, discussion regarding proposed first responder coaching services. So, Chief had sent that to all of us. It's not exactly what we had had in the past and was discontinued, but it's something similar and, and in the same vein, and at least some services, which is a gap today that we've been looking to fill, so more of just, was there any questions or anything you, gentlemen, wanted Chief to further elaborate on or concerns about before he moved forward? We have budget for this, obviously, so.
Correct.
Yeah, budget.
Since he's here anyway, I was, easy to say, if there's anything you guys had.
I, I believe this is an important tool or opportunity to provide for our officers, and if Chief is comfortable with this option, I support it.
So I can just give you a little, so I did meet with, with Jen, and, and she's married to a Lemonster officer or former Lemonster officer, and, and I think that in your packet, it kinda gives her story. So, I, I think what's really interesting about this opportunity is, is that it's, we're gonna be, you know, if, in the event our officers need somebody to talk to, they're talking to somebody that gets it, that understands. You know, to, to the chairman's point, I do think that there are still some gaps, but, and, and we'll see, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll take it for the year and see if, if the officers reach out and use the service. We get 25 services, 25 calls, 30-minute services. But what's interesting is that, while, while she was talking to us, is that she wants to move in the direction of also helping law enforcement develop policies to address these needs, you know, and, and so I take, for example, we have an officer that has his first or her first unattended death. Really, a supervisor should come in and check on that officer and see how they handled that situation. There should be follow-up, and, and I think we don't have those policies in place right now. But with the help of Jen, who she has worked with fire departments, and fire departments do have policies like that in place. So I'm excited about that opportunity as well as what that could, could look like in the future, you know, for, for guidance, for, for how we address, you know, in policies. Another thing that I liked about it was, is that it's, it's pretty quickly readily available. I think, I think the packet said 24 hours. And it's nice is that the only thing I know is, is that one of your officers called and used the sessions. I don't even know who the officer is, probably. They do take it serious that if there's a serious incident where the officer is in extreme distress and, and potentially gonna take his or her life, they do obviously reach out to the, to the resources and get that person help immediately. But outside of that, a lot of it is protected by HIPAA, and, and I just know if, if officers are using the resource. Another thing that was kinda cool in talking with her is that they, she is moving in the direction of trying to make it for the family as well. You know, so if one of the officers go, goes home and finds that, you know, is talking to his wife, and his wife is like, oh my gosh, the, the wife or the husband would be able to reach out, or, or maybe even a child. I don't know if that's in place right now, but I know that in talking with her, that, that they would like to move in that direction at some point.
Sounds good. I don't think any one service, to your comment about gaps, I don't think any one thing covers everything, right? It just isn't, but it's something, and we wanna have as much as we can, so.
And I think if, the, the, the big gap is, is that they're not therapists.
Right.
You know, I mean, they're just going to try to understand and help and give tools to, to somebody to deal with what it is, but they're not professional, they're not giving professional advice. And, and that, I think that gap is, is the big area.
In reading this, I was, I was wondering, you know, is, was there a discussion on your part of how to utilize this sort of in a proactive way and not, because a lot of this, they're very clear that this is not just a reactive, something happened and you call, it's kinda like a life coach of maybe even prior to utilizing some of those. So I don't know if there's a way to sort of work that into.
Yep.
Utilization of those 25 sessions.
Yep.
Obviously, you don't wanna, you, you wanna have those if you need, you know.
Sure.
The, the reactive as well.
I, I did speak with her, Scott, and she, she was willing to come, one, she was willing to come and talk with everybody and kind of explain the whole program to everybody, so they understand how to utilize it, what it does, what it doesn't do. But they also, she, she does a self-test to see where people are at.
Okay.
And, and she said the same thing, right? She, they want to prevent, they wanna get in front of, and so they would encourage, like, you don't have to be in a crisis, you don't have to have just come from a crisis call.
Right.
To, to utilize them. And, and she did speak on that, and I, I don't wanna say for certain, but she did indicate to me that outside of the 25 sessions, she would come to the PD, and I can get that, I, I'll get that clarified, that she would be willing to come to the PD, give like an overall view, training type, you know, how to, how to access, and then that self-test of, of where you, where that officer may, may be in that moment, so.
The, the sales quote, do you have a line item for, that'll cover both of that, because it's 5,600? Because the, the sales pitch was for two of the 25-pack, so you actually have 50 30-minute One 25-pack is 1550.
Right, so I, and, and, you know, Town Administrator's gonna speak better to this, but from my understanding, there's 5,000 set aside for this, so that 3,100 is covered.
Some personnel.
The, the, the line above it.
Are we not doing the?
The coaching at this point? No, we're not. That, for, for us to send an officer to, I, I think it has to be a very specific officer, and I'm not saying none of my officers wouldn't fit that mold, but you're looking at four to six weeks or six to eight weeks.
Intensive training.
So, no, we're not looking at that right now. It would be just the sessions.
Are you looking to just buy the 25 sessions, then the 1550?
You're looking, so the.
No, we would be getting 50 sessions.
Okay.
50 sessions.
You kept saying 25, just wanted to make sure, so it's two packs of, so you have 50 sessions.
Yeah, one pack is 25, 30 minutes.
Almost once a week, somebody could utilize it throughout the year.
Right.
Okay.
And if you make that available to utilize, maybe people do utilize it, and if we find that people still aren't utilizing it, maybe we go back to one pack, or maybe we reevaluate it in a year, two years, and this isn't what, this isn't helping or it's not needed, so.
Sure, sure, right. Okay, I just wanted clarity, because the, the sales pitch was for a big package, and I, I didn't hear you talking about the intensive course, so I wanted to make sure.
And when I met with Jen, I thought that, you know, 25, 30-minute sessions seemed a lot for our small department, but then I thought, well, I don't want somebody to be like, well, I've already called four times, I don't wanna take away from somebody else's, that's why I was thinking the 50 sessions, the, the two packs.
Yep.
But.
That's fine.
And the caps is on there, but we're not gonna do it at this time, right?
Say that again.
The caps.
The caps, the, the coaching piece?
We're not doing that.
It's on there, we're not planning on moving forward.
She just put that price so you guys could see what that price is like.
So we had it, yeah, okay.
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 I have no concerns with it.
Same. All good.
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
See you tomorrow.
Appreciate it. I'll jump down, review of the streetlight procurement for Lillian's Way. Come on up, sir. Oh, of course, when she stepped out. Oh, there you are, you're up, you're up.
She's back. Boy, it seems like so long ago we did that walkthrough.
Kind of like senior housing.
Maybe not that long.
Just kidding.
It feels like it at times.
Yeah.
Rough crowd.
Right? So what happens, we get to these topics before 9 o'clock?
Thank you.
It's a miracle. It's a miracle. All right, so we have proposal.
Yeah, we're hoping to purchase three streetlights for Lillian's Way. And we've looked at some solar-powered ones, which would be easier, and we figured that this would be a good opportunity to try them out, see how they work. I did reach out to three, two references. One was a college in Colorado, and one was in South Dakota. One was college in South Dakota and a municipality in Colorado. Both had rave reviews about them, so they haven't had any issues. They've both had them in for multiple years, and the municipality in Colorado said that they've placed multiple orders and expanded most of their parking lots to have them. So, and I asked specifically about snow load and winter weather, and they both said they've had no problems. And the only feedback from the South Dakota folks was that sometimes in high wind, they noticed that the brackets would, the bolts would loosen, and so they just added a longer bolt that went through so that they could stabilize it better, but that they, other than that, they haven't had to do any maintenance on them or anything like that.
Interesting. Is there any kind of monitoring on them to know if they're working, or is it more of we'd be visually assessing if there was an issue?
What was that?
Monitoring.
Like monitoring that they run out of power or not?
Oh, like on an app or something?
Yeah. I'm assuming it's gonna be Glenn driving by and seeing them.
I think so, yeah.
Neighbor calling.
Yeah, or someone saying, yes.
Similar to what we have now. Hey, can you get the streetlight that's out?
Yeah, they did say that.
The streetlight, it doesn't work half the time, yeah.
They did say that the photo sensor is, it goes off of, they turn on when the solar panel is done producing for the day. And so compared to like a photo eye, it can seem like they turn on later, because like it's still getting some kind of ambient sun.
Later, really? I'd be surprised.
So that was the one thing, is he said like it didn't, it wasn't like it turned on wicked late, but just that the photo eyes, you know, sometimes those are on, and you're like, it's still light out. Why is the streetlight on? These ones, it's truly, it's dark out, and the streetlight goes on.
If there's enough light to hit that photo panel, it's not gonna turn on until that stops.
He's never had anyone complain that they're not on when they should be.
Given that, I think some of the residents said, why are you putting back any streetlights? I don't think they'll complain that they go on later.
And I think all of us go around going, why is it still bright out and the lights on?
Yeah, and we did look at the, they gave a kind of a projected drawing, and it covers across the street as well, which was one of the desires of some folks on the street was to have enough that it would cover where the mailboxes are on the opposite side of the street.
But not like shining into the windows.
That's the picture I was just looking at, of their projection of the light dispersment.
Exactly, so they're not, they're not the acorn ones where they're gonna, everyone's windows are gonna be blasted with light or anything.
So those will throw differently than the ones we have right now that we retrofitted?
No, they're gonna throw just like, just like our similar ones that we have now, down. Instead of like the acorn ones that were there, they're projected out more than down.
I might disagree, living near one, but we'll take that offline. Well, we can. It's fine. They look, they look like they're more recessed than what we have, is what I was wondering.
Yeah, I believe these were four-foot arms.
Yeah.
Is what we did.
And one outstanding question we have is just the mounting. There was some confusion about whether we needed a footing or not, and so that's a thing that we can coordinate afterwards. But, you know, we just need to figure out how, whether they're direct burial or mounted on a concrete pedestal.
Okay. Questions? Concerns? We have budget.
Yeah.
We have a line item for it.
Set aside for it, yeah.
I have no concerns in moving forward with it.
And no concerns here.
Even if it was have to be on a pedestal, there's still money in the budget.
There's enough in there to do both. Most of those pedestals, are they precast?
So that's the way we would do it. When we did the pedestrian crossing ones, we had a contractor come in with an auger. We set the sonnet tube. We built the form for the anchor bolts. We poured it. When Mastod did theirs down in Irving Center, they came in, the auger to hole, they set a precast, all the way down in there with the bolts already on it.
So much easier.
So it's what we would do for these. We would just have that part contracted out, and we had lower mid set them in.
Sounds much easier.
Yes, and quicker.
So, do you need a motion on the gray bar quote?
Correct. And they should be buying off of the state contract.
And that includes the install? Oh, never mind, they're solar. Never mind. Thinking of wiring. There's no wiring.
There is no wiring.
There is no wiring.
It is internal stuff, it is.
Yeah, but it's all built. You're just gonna put it up. Just a matter of once it's in place, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
I'm too used to them having to be wired, and I'm thinking about the ones on the other side of town that need work, so it's all good.
Yeah, no, we would be assembling these and installing them.
So then this quote is for purchase only?
Correct, just equipment.
Just purchasing equipment.
Right.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of some photovoltaic powered streetlights. Three of them through Gray Bar out of Westwood, Mass. In the amount of $20,442.09. It said right on there, has their vendor code.
Yep.
They're on the, they're on the list.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can't wait to see those go up. I think they're gonna be.
I'm curious how they're gonna look. I'm kind of excited. It's gonna be interesting.
So are we?
Yeah. Thank you. Back to the top. Review proposed amendments to the traffic, for the traffic rules and regulations, third read. Item 1A, 1B.
No concerns. The only change I made for this week is just to update the issuance and effective date section.
Right. To today. No concerns.
No concerns. So I'll make a motion to adopt the amended regulation, Chapter 360, titled Traffic Rules and Orders, as presented with an effective date of November 27, 2023.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Surplus equipment request, assessor's filing cabinet, third read. No change, any concerns?
No concerns.
And what is our plan to do with them?
Is it gonna make it available to the public first through?
Local, on local bid.
Local newsletter, and if there's no takers, I think you all said, make it available to the neighboring towns. And if nobody truly wants it, then we can.
Put it in the metal dumpster?
Insert plus it to the scrap metal.
Give it a second life as melted metal?
When you say offer it to locals, are we first come, first served?
Yeah, that's typically how we do it.
No price, free, first come, first served. You want it, let us know, come pick it up.
Oh, you're not doing a bid one, you're doing a just a?
I can do it either way.
No, no, I'm just asking.
I mean, I know it says estimated value was 100 in an auction. I mean, I'm not, I've had people come in before and put $5 on the bid for something.
I don't think it's, I don't truly think it's valuable enough to go through the effort.
I don't think it's worth the time to put it. I think you just put it out there, first come, first served. We're not gonna hold it. If you want to come pick it up, it's here.
I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And give it, I mean, whatever, a week or so, a week or two after it goes out, and that's it.
Yeah.
And after that, we can.
Open it up to another municipality.
Can circulate it locally and give it another few weeks, and if nobody wants it.
Scrap it. There you go.
Move it in the dumpster.
Okay, that's what we'll do. So you want a motion to, motion to deem the steel filing cabinet from the assessor's office as surplus and to dispose of through donation to locals and/or other municipalities.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Section four, meeting minutes, review meeting minutes. We have June 12, 2023.
I did not get a chance to read October 30. I'm just gonna throw that out there now. Those are the ones that came later.
I did not either, so we'll pass over.
If the two of you did, I was gonna say, you know, go for it if you're happy with them, but I know I didn't get a chance to.
No, we'll pass over October 30, 23, and bring them next meeting.
I did read the other ones. Just gotta get back to the page.
Yeah, June 12 and November 13, 23.
Real quick, was there any amendments, edits to any of them?
I did not have any.
None, no? Then I'm just gonna make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from June 12, 2023, and November 13, 2023. Excuse me, 2023 as written. Lost my voice there for a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2023 Golden Kane recipient.
It's down the bottom.
Is he aware?
He has been informed.
Okay, because I don't want to spoil it if he's not.
Right.
So the Golden Kane Committee is gonna present Irving's oldest citizen, Mr. Robert Bitzer of Lillian's Way with the Golden Kane Award. He is turning 97 years young on November 29, on Wednesday. And they're gonna present it to him this week, right?
Yep.
Wow. Impressive.
Excellent.
I think, I don't know the exact timing, but if either of you are available or were wanting to join them.
Didn't say a timing, so I'm not sure.
I don't know. Do we have a firm time yet to?
We can follow up with that afterwards.
Okay.
We can check.
Yeah, if you'd let us know, and if one of us can make it, we will.
Yeah.
As well. Very exciting. Congratulations to him.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Many of them. Review and potential appointment, Council on Aging. How many members do we have currently?
We currently only have three, and it's a seven-member board, so this will get us back to a quorum, but we still have three more seats to fill.
We can't appoint without one more, can we? Oh, wait, we can. Never mind, we can. Okay.
Yep.
At least they get back to a quorum.
This gets us back to a quorum.
Right.
And in the future ones, we'd have to do a.
Trial?
Or no?
Oh, no, this is not elected board.
It's, that's, that's what I was throwing to you for a second. It's appointed, not elected, because I, because we don't have a quorum. At six, we would have had to have one member.
Yep.
So, but it's not. It's an appointed.
Correct. The Council on Aging is appointed by the select board.
Not an elected, so.
Okay.
Joyce Newton, put in the letter of interest. Any concerns, questions?
I'll make a motion to appoint Joyce Newton as a member of the Council on Aging, effective November 27, 2023, with a term ending June 30, 2026.
I will second that.
All those in favor? With that, unless somebody caught something I missed, we're talking about next meeting, or did I skip one?
Water commitment.
Any questions, concerns?
None.
This is the corrections from the abatements?
This is correcting two of those accounts. I have one more to fix, but.
One to go, okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Excellent. Thank you all.
Okay, now on to upcoming meeting. Couple items. One, a little quick discussion about some of the items on it, and two, what do we want to do in December? Because our second December meeting is Christmas Day on the calendar we're on right now, which is not gonna happen. You guys can come if you want. So whether or not we want to have a different date or in what that date might be. Next meeting, the 11th. Have we confirmed for setting the tax, having the tax classification hearing? We have, or have not? Is that waiting on me?
Confirmed in the sense of.
Is it firm or is it not firm yet?
I have had a subsequent conversation with the principal assessor that that is the date and the time that we have held aside for this.
Okay.
And the Board of Assessors is working towards that goal. They're gonna confirm with our office this week so that we can do all the proper notifications.
Okay.
So the goal, I believe, is 7:00 PM on the 11th for that. Or you can set it whatever you want, but that's what we've been discussing.
Okay. And I'll send something separately, but I believe there's some significant changes, so we expect one of the assessors to be ready to speak to that. Sure there'll be questions. And to, just to understand it. The, what, I have to look it up, but we have CDBG.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
6:45.
6:45, which hopefully will be 15 minutes. Assessor's at 7.
Brian McHugh is scheduled to be here with you.
At 6:45, yep. We have, that was a joint meeting, I think, on our list with finance and capital. It was planned.
It was a discussion about whether or not you were going to, but we don't have agenda topics yet for that joint meeting.
So we might have the senior housing proposal if we hear back from council in time, so we might bring that back for that. I feel like there was one other big one that we had that night already on the docket, but I could be wrong.
The Capital Planning Committee does have the all-departments presentations on the 14th that week?
Yeah, I meant for our meeting. I thought there was one other large item already planned, but maybe not.
Okay.
And then we're talking with the library director and the trustees about the closeout and kind of final review of the library project and that we talked about, bringing that to the group and talking through the financials. Start to finish, where are we? I think, at least in my head, we were paid off, but we're not in terms of what we committed to do back to stabilization, things like that. Just kind of where, where are the final pieces in closing that out and what's still open? So that'll be coming, probably not on the 11th, but, or won't be on the 11th, but after that.
The other topic that, if you're not gonna have a second meeting in December, we need to deal with on the 11th, will be the issuance of business licenses for January 1st.
So that brings us to meeting schedule for December.
Would it make sense to meet the week of the 18th?
I was, yeah.
On the 18th, if they've got.
We don't have anything on the 18th related to.
I need to load the budget calendar.
That's what I was just gonna pull up with the budget calendar.
14th is capital, what the department has.
Okay.
That's existing and.
I knew there was something coming up, but it wasn't the 18th.
But we didn't schedule the due dates for submissions of the 11th. The 14th is the presentation of capital, but we didn't schedule anything the week of the 18th.
I think it makes sense to hold one. At least tentatively hold that spot. If nothing else, a quick one to issue all those licenses rather than burdening the 11th with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to try to fit that in. That's a pretty short order, too, so.
Right, and then we can add on any other, knowing that the next two Mondays after that are both holidays.
Correct.
Yeah, if we don't do one, we're going to.
And we're waiting until the second week of January. It's just too far, you know.
The other piece that you have, you have two elected official seats still open, and we've put out a notice again to the residents that those seats are open. So you have one on the school committee now, and you have a seat open on the rec commission. And so we have set a date, I believe, of December 13, asking for those letters of interest to be returned. So it's possible that you'll have responses, and if so, you potentially could schedule joint business with either rec or school committee to consider those letters of interest.
Will there be enough time to review all of those letters of interest?
It's possible.
Sorry.
By all, you mean both?
Or none?
Possible.
Does that include ZBA?
Yeah, we will reissue our listing of all your appointed boards and commissions where we have vacancies, because we have several vacancies. We've been running them for several months.
I expect if we put a footnote on a waiting list, if that's moving forward, that says, but need ZBA members to keep things going, we might have interested parties.
It's possible.
You never know. So anyhow, okay. So 18th, does that work for both of you?
Yeah. I suppose I should check my other calendar. Before I blindly say yes.
Oh, and I think I, yeah, I owe you guys that footnote probably from one of. Oh, and I think I, yeah, I owe you guys that footnote, probably from one of our last meetings. I did speak, just as, just as an update, there's nothing to discuss yet, but I did speak with Weston and Sampson regarding Swamp Road Bridge. An individual there who's on the team for us and he's working internally to discuss what that might look like, but seemed receptive to coming to some, you know, mutual agreement to help us move forward with the grant opportunity. They were excited and congratulated us on getting that grant too and didn't want to impede, obviously impede our ability to successfully execute that and.
It's good to hear.
Benefit from, from anything there, so. And I think there was an open item of not knowing who all the engineers that were, because they were adding a few. They were, they missed it by one point or something, so they are not in the pool. They were like the next one, so. So he did confirm they're not, so that, that option is, is not there, so. So that was helpful to know too, just to keep kind of moving forward on that, so. He's supposed to get back to me this week with the time and Brian and I will probably meet with them and Mariah and Glenn possibly and talk through. We may have it by the 11th or the 18th to, to talk through what, what we need to do to kind of bring that to the right point, to handoff and go forward. And we don't have data yet on who we'd be going forward with, so we've got a little time.
Correct, yeah, we're waiting to hear back from Mastod. But now that you mentioned bridges, the 25% submissions for Church Street have been submitted as of last week, so we've hit that threshold and we're waiting.
We're in the 30-day now, right?
They set the review process, give us the feedback. If we're successful in getting through this review with limited feedback, they will schedule us for the 25% public hearing, which is the major milestone that we need to hit.
That's a big one.
And they've been continuing to work on proposals about moving up the timeline and I know there's been some feedback from Boston leadership of DOT or, you know, management about being concerned about the timeline and wanting to make sure we hit it, so.
Right.
They're trying to work with us to get there, with the engineers and everything, so.
Correct.
Hopefully we can all work together and get there.
That's the goal.
It's a big, it's a big goal that we got to hit, so we'll get there. Anyhow, that's what we have.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, that's, yeah, it was a good conversation and, yeah, I don't. There'll be some, something we got to sort out, but we owe them that and we'll figure that out and I'm sure it won't be, I don't think it'll be an issue. We were pretty confident it would be fine. So, anything else?
See you on the 11th.